Back up.
People.
Galissa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, morning, everybody. While we need order, we have a quorum. I'd take a motion to approve agenda, please.
So.
All right, your motion or second?
My second.
All favor I? I oppose. All right, morning, Rich.
We're gonna do some project updates. Well, five is being shoulder this morning and starting that. I'm gonna guess it's gonna be at least a week to get that done. Prime contractors called last week and some issues with the roadway striping paint. Apparently, there's a shortage in the state of Iowa. For the D O C paint, which is a solvent based paint that evaporates faster, so it's. There may be water one thing available, so. Because it's not a state job, we might be able to skirt the specifications a little bit, and because the road is still technically closed, we might be able to paint it on the still closed and let it cure out since it's a slower cure than that D O C paint, so. I haven't got any information back from the contractor, so we'll just wait and see, but shoulders are going, and that's kind of the key. The three ninety street bridge, I'm told. That contractor is supposed to be in today to start working on the approaches there. Once the approaches get done, then they can bring the dirt crew back in and get some of the dirt shaped up so they can jarger. But that, I told them, we're still charging workdays every day that they should be there, so I mean, they're probably gonna encroach some, some liquidated damages, I think. I haven't looked at their reports lately, but they've gotta be pushing the limit. And I'm gonna hold them to it because it's just kind of ridiculous, and I, I get that the. People can't find workers, so projects take longer, but it is what it is, and we better close for quite a while.
Right. That's. I agree with that. It's definitely needs, needs to be buttoned up.
Well, I mean, really, it's been sitting there for quite a while. There's, you know.
People have been pretty understanding.
They have been.
I just told by there that Dan, I know the guy's got a cornfield on both sides of the drains, it's gonna take up five acres.
Yeah, I know, it's, and I looked at it too, and it's, you know, it's. It is bad that, you know, it started during harvest time to close this stuff up, but we can't. Take take schedules, and I mean, I've got a bridge closed now in Mitchell County that's. I mean, put footings in yet, and here we are in early November, and it's not gonna get warmer out, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's where we're at on the project, so hopefully we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnels soon.
And three fifty is done in.
Three fifty was done in less than, less than a week and a half.
Hundred percent.
That's hundred percent.
Good.
Okay. Um, I'm working with the D O T on some. F M funding things. I was going through some project stuff because they turned in the Leatherwood project, the overlay. Project for next year and that, and then do a farm to market balance worksheet, and there's some projects that are hanging out there yet. That seemed to be kind of weird to me. We did a paving project back in twenty seventeen that was supposed to have been funding on it. And for some reason, I think that. The contracts didn't turn, the vouchers, it didn't, contracts didn't turn into. To finance to send us pay vouchers, so we paid for it locally. And then we never got, we never turned in reimbursement for it. So we've got that project that we get reimbursed for, however, when Mitchell County paved Zinnian Avenue a few years back. We were supposed to pay fifty percent of that project, and I sent letters to see if we could get the funding switched over so we could give our fifty percent. To Mitchell County because they covered the whole project. Well, that didn't take place either because I, I sent letters and. I thought I'd been taken care of, and I'm looking and I'm not finding anything, so. Probably what we're owed is what we owe Mitchell County anyway, so our balances. I'm working with the, the D O T to figure out how to get that figured out, because it's just kind of, I mean, we can turn in, the easiest thing would be to us, for us to. Turn in our reimbursements, get our money back, but if we had to do a fund transfer, either or, we'll have to do a resolution. I'll work with the D O T on getting this stuff squared away because it's really kind of messing up. When I look at our farm to market balances and how we're borrowed ahead and how we're not borrowed ahead, there's six hundred and seventy some thousand dollars sitting in there that's obligated. So it shows that we're, you know, we're borrowed ahead. Well, if we get that money back, we can put it back into our local funding, we use it locally. But we also owe. Mitchell County six hundred thousand dollars for their project too, so. It's there, and it probably keeps us balanced in a way, but it's something I gotta get cleaned up because there's some things that are just kind of hanging out there that shouldn't. I think they were, I don't know, sometimes if contracts doesn't get stuff to finance properly, and. I thought it was weird because it was an F M project that we were turning in local vouchers for, so. It was nice that our local funding could cover the costs, but. We'll figure something out. I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather just probably leave it the way it is, or we've got the local funding that took care of the project and that money. From the Mitchell County side, so it's all taken care of, but otherwise we just have to. But we'll see other local funding, because it could help, you know, it could help us out on other projects too. That's what we're working on right now, so. Then I think I have an agenda, I've got four years. I don't have any payroll things, but just to let you guys know where our hiring status is and what we're gonna do. Losing one, losing two employees now, kind of replaced two, sent out or verbally offered a position to employee, to two potential employees who have. Accepted. One is Mark. I heard some, I think is how I spell it. The other one is Ryan Gasky, Ryan Gasky's workforce and fast and snow removal. I don't know, probably eight years ago now, so it's been a while, but they both accepted the job, and we're probably gonna get them started. End of, end of November, early December, if you guys are okay with that, payroll stuff, we're just to let you guys know where that's at.
Yeah, get them.
Finance some people.
Yeah, so.
Um, but it's normal, let's come.
Yeah, well, we still gotta get some part timers, actually.
Yeah.
We'll get some part timers in here too, then we'll figure out in spring whether we need to put one more full timer on board. Because we are kind of still short one person.
Turn it back some of your part timers.
Yeah, yeah, well, a lot of our, a lot of our part timers are coming back, we just. With, with one being out of work comp yet, you know, we're still short kind of one person, so we'll see how spring goes. Might put one more on staff. Though, get all those people, let them know when things are gonna go and move forward with getting some people on board before the snow flies.
Sounds good.
Any questions on anything else going on? And I'll meet you after the meeting.
Yeah.
The assignment patient stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know the, the prime contractor does have some stuff set in the Leatherwood circle yet or whatever out there at the industrial or the. Look at that cleanup, and we told them we wanted to clean up the little spots around the pavement. They'll get them cleaned up as best they can, but they put Florida out there and grind it in with everything. They were, they were really thankful to be able to use that as staging with the trucks because that site was kind of tiny.
Limited space.
It worked out for them.
I guess I'd rather do that than have them tear up that one whole lot and then have to.
Right, fix that.
Put it all back together and get it right, so.
No, it was, it was easier for them to, when it rained down, when we were dragging one all over.
Right. It was staying hard surface a lot, so. Okay, thank you, Rich.
It's a, it's a really good project, and I've driven it, it drives like an interstate.
Good enough.
I'm not promoting speed, but.
More signs though, right? Yeah, thanks, sir. Uh, drainage. Any claims? Ever seen any? Um, so right down to Bolden Mink report, removal of parcels from district. Um, state code says you cannot remove parcels, is that what I understand, right?
Yep.
Same thing.
That's what I read in there.
And here. Jacob will get on the phone if you guys wanna talk about it.
Do we need to, or, I mean.
Were you guys okay with it?
I, I talked to Jacob already about it. Because the acreages are off.
Yeah.
So he adjusted those.
He did that.
Because that one, that one forty was never in D D two to start with, and the other one had Gus Hagan in there and added a little bit in. His recommendation was considering all that tile goes to the west and then drops into the ditch going down the.
Yeah, not, not in another district.
Not in another district. It wouldn't, another district, it'd be a whole different deal, but it is, so on Gordy's half that I can see where he doesn't wanna. You know, he wants a minimum payment, but the problem is, the only problem I got with it, I don't think he should, I think the five dollar deal is okay, except for setting up a precedence. For people down the road, because like Jacob told me, he says in Worth County, you've got a lot of people that are right on the line where they could go one way or the other. And I, my farm is an example of it, to the south of me, that stuff all comes a little west and goes right down the ravine, right down the creek. So I could do the same thing and get out of that too.
And that should come out at the meetings, not after the fact.
Well, yes, that's right. Yeah, as far as. Yeah. So that's the only, I just, I don't wanna set a precedence up.
I think we've done, we've done other ones, we moved them to a minimum assessment because we split it between districts or something.
Yeah, and if you've already done this in the past, then you're not setting a precedent.
No. I know we did it down on eight and eighteen, there was some ground, I think there was, I wanna say it was moved from one district into the other.
But that was formal with Walton Lake.
Correct.
Yeah, that was done within the process.
Yep. So.
That makes it different or not, but.
Well, we're not actually approving the removal of it, are we?
We just be.
Accepting their. We're accepting them going to five dollars is the maximum you can pay ever, no matter what you do to D D two.
As long as his tile goes the other way.
Right. And of course, fifty, sixty years from now, if that tile fills up and it goes back into D D two, who's gonna find out about that? You know, that's another question you got.
Well, and then there's still. So I mean, he still gets a little bit out of it, no matter what.
Well, if his subsurface water is going the other way, his surface water probably goes out there too. It's pretty hard to tile if your water doesn't already go that way. So. But I, yeah.
We just need to pull back on letting him totally out.
Right.
And then decide if.
Well, let's stay cool, let's stay cool.
If he, if he should get a refund.
Well, it's probably gonna be some more work, just as well, because money.
I guess my attitude is, on the refund, he had, we had meetings.
Several.
It should have been done a long time ago on the refund. I think it's what's coming ahead is what he's trying to avoid.
That's what I would say.
I don't think.
I guess he wants to push the issue.
So.
Yeah, I don't think there should be any refund whatsoever because that should have been done a long time ago.
Need a motion basically to allow to move to the, accept the report to the minimum assessment, I'll make that a motion.
All right, motion for Mark to accept the report and move to minimum assessment, is there a second?
Yeah, not refund.
And not refund?
No refund, okay. That's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
I.
I oppose. That motion will carry. Thing else on drainage? Uh, things. So things come to questions.
That's because we're doing it every. I'll make motion to approve the claims.
Motion to approve the claims, or second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? You're now, I'll favor I. Oppose. Here. Uh, motion to approve payroll claims. Okay, motions are second?
My second.
Discussion. You know, I'll favor I. Oh. All right, motion carry. Are there any reports?
Yes.
Record fifteen hundred and sheriff.
Motion to approve those.
Motion to approve reports are second. All favor I? I oppose. Very. Hey. Payroll eligibility or salary changes.
It's longevity and the other one is. You. Oh, home healthcare.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Can replacement?
Uh, new.
Homer new, home healthcare, full time?
Yes, nurse.
Yes, no.
Home health.
Somebody left.
Somebody left.
Okay.
Remember. Kind of rolling door to, I'll make a motion to.
The payroll changes? Okay, there's motion there second? Any other discussion? All favor I? I oppose. Here. Okay. Uh, liquor license?
Um, something for happy time, um. This has already been approved, there, um, it doesn't expire until June third, twenty twenty two, but there was like a ownership change or something, so.
Oh, maybe.
Run it through again.
Run it back through.
So we'll see change or something, or something.
Okay, so let's try it through now, and let's take a hash it out. Motion to approve the liquor license for Happy Times Resort LLC. All right, any other discussion? All favor I?
All right.
Post. Yeah, they upgraded those forms, but still they're struggling.
I haven't seen anything easier come from the state yet. Uh, twenty eight E agreement with the Welcome Center.
That's just.
More.
Still got a few of those stragglers, they had, um. Wanted a couple of tweaks, and so I sent that out to you guys to look at. I can't remember, it's.
Couldn't have been much.
Yeah. And they have agreed that they would be willing to do an annual. Say what, you know.
Financial, financial statement type thing.
Kind of like what the, like Elder Bridge and all the other places do.
Yeah, and they retire, I don't know what they're gonna do out there either.
Yeah.
Right. All right, take a motion to approve the twenty eighty agreement with the I thirty five one oh five Welcome Center.
I'll make that a motion.
Or second?
My second.
Any other discussion? We'll call vote, Lowberg, maybe, Stone. Motion will pass. Right. Twenty eighty agreement between North County and the county electronic services system, the resolution twenty twenty one dot eleven dot oh eight. So this is the one that's been.
This is.
This is for the recorder's office, right?
Yes. Actually, there's really no change, everything's gonna be running the same way, however, with our association, the state has. Decided that since we're a nonprofit, that we won't have to file the tax form, so that's why we need this amendment.
Actually, something that makes life a little simpler.
Yes.
Less paperwork. That's a shock. So, okay. All right, so I'll take a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dot eleven dot oh eight, which is a twenty eighty agreement. Between North County and County Electronic Services System.
I'm gonna make that a motion.
All right, there second?
My second.
Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Lowberg.
I.
Maybe.
I.
Stone, I, that resolution will pass. Okay. Budget amendment. Other bridges up here.
And I need a, a noary, so we'll just run upstairs.
All right. All right, just reminding, we're done, and we'll go up there. All right, so I'll jump down to Winworth Betco. Melissa.
Morning. Um, just, uh, that's, um, meeting on Friday, I just moved it to Four City. Uh, Beth, we're gonna use Beth's office, she won't be around, but Sean's gonna be able to help us out with that. And then, um, oh, and the sign, I ordered the sign for the interchange, the two signs. And Heartland Power is gonna pay for the entire bill, so next time you see John, give him a shout out.
Well, thanks.
Fantastic. Um, Rich and I are gonna go out there after the meeting and, and take a look for locations.
It's.
Put them out there.
It's six millimeter poly metals that matters.
It's not, they'll hold up. With just a frame then, basically, right? Yeah. Okay.
Posting frame.
Yep.
And should be good.
Okay. All right, yeah, we're gonna go out there afterwards and take a look at that, so.
All right, sounds good.
Any else?
Nope.
Is there any for lots of?
Right now, where's the office at in town, Eric, we come?
Right across the street from the courthouse.
Oh, okay, okay. Park around the front entrance courthouse, it's on the east side of the street. Okay, thanks, Melissa, see you Friday. All right. Just not here yet. Uh, people service, like Chris was here last week, wasn't he? Everything.
Oh, yeah, Jeff was gonna zoom.
Oh, is he? We.
I have no idea.
Oh, Sherry's on Zoom too.
Hello. Yeah, this, this is Jeff.
Hey, Jeff, can I hold you off for just a few minutes?
Sure.
Okay, sounds good. Um, we're gonna go through a couple more things here quick, and then we've got our, our canvas and stuff, and then we'll get to you right after that, if that's okay, because that might take a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you. Um.
Unmute, sure.
Yeah, Sherry Bodacker with Elder Bridge, sorry, I didn't see on the Zoom line there, I think, thought you maybe were coming in today.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
We can see each other a little bit this way.
That's right.
As you'll notice from your agenda, um, this is the year I'm retiring, so we have a new finance director, a new CFO, Jody Presswood. And so, um. It's kind of sad, the last time I'll be talking to you gentlemen. But anyway, hopefully you've received the annual report and the county report page from Elder Bridge. Just a couple of things I want to comment on. As you are all aware, FY twenty one was a very different year. I didn't separate out home delivered and congregate meals because, quite honestly. Most of the meal sites in our area did not attempt to congregate until about April or May of this last spring. On a positive note, the number of meals served in Worth County increased by about seventeen percent. So I think that means that Elder Bridge was doing a good job of reaching those people if they were using grab and go meals, or whether they were using home delivered meals. Looking at some of the other numbers, I want to say again how much we appreciate partnering with Worth County Public Health. We subcontract with them for the homemaker and personal care services. Those services were down slightly from FY twenty, and a large part of that reason was problems in finding staffing. I think that's kind of a common, common theme that you'll hear everywhere. There are two new programs that we started this last year that I want to make you aware of. One is to combat social isolation in senior citizens. It is a means tested program. And yet the people cannot be on Medicaid. And it's a grand pad service where we provide what's basically a lockdown iPad to the person. The case manager then is able to visit with the client face to face, so to speak, through a video call. We're able to program in numbers of family members so they can do FaceTime calls with family members and also with doctors. So that's been a good program. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear that anyone in Worth County is participating in that. So if you gentlemen know of someone, or Jackie, if you know of someone who would, would fit in that. Program, please contact Elder Bridge, because I think it is a really good program, especially as. We're still dealing with a lot of social isolation out there. The other program is called the Iowa Cafe. And it's a partnership between the triple A's and local restaurants. Elder Bridge provides vouchers for senior citizens to go and eat at those local restaurants. We've been finding that. That as people age in, they aren't necessarily wanting to go to a senior center for a congregate meal. So this is our way of attempting to reach those younger senior citizens. And the program's been doing that, um, we have signed up with a restaurant in Northwood, the Bean and Bistro. And so you'll be seeing some numbers on that for next year. Um, it's a, it's a popular program, we go in and our dietitian works with the restaurant. They do a selection of menu items and tweak them a little bit so they meet the nutritional guidelines. And then the, the meal is provided to the senior citizen, they do receive a letter asking for a contribution if they're able. But it's certainly a free will offering. So those are the two new programs I'm excited about for Elder Bridge.
Yeah. Well, that's good. I know the Grand Pad thing, I, uh. Know some people that participate with that in Mason City, and it sounds like that is a really good, really good program. Really good thing to help. Yeah, single people or, you know, whatever, get out and be in touch with others, it's, so, um, hopefully more people utilize that here.
Yes, Danielle Krail just joined us by video, Danielle is our healthy aging coordinator, so she's in charge of that Iowa Cafe program.
Morning, Danielle.
Good morning.
So again, we would appreciate, um, the county contribution. This year it got a little more complicated because Rob Sand came through with a ruling that said we did have to do twenty eighty agreements. When for years we had been told that we didn't have to do them because we were an instrumentality of state government. But we want to follow the rules, so that's why we have, have done the twenty eighty agreements with all of the counties.
Yep, now we've been doing a week after week here, we're still not caught up yet, so. Uh, that's part of it, so, well, we thank you very much, and, uh. As long as we can financially do it, we'll continue to contribute, I believe, so.
Thank you very much.
And good luck to you, and thanks for your service, enjoy your retirement.
Oh, I will, thank you.
All right, have a good day, thank you.
Bye bye.
All right. Hmm, okay, well, looks like we're about at that nine o'clock bell. Let's move back up in the agenda to resolution twenty twenty one dot eleven dot oh eight dot oh two. Which is fiscal year twenty one twenty two budget amendment. And we need to go to public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I take a motion to recess, or I'm just gonna go ahead and recess in the regular meeting, and take a motion to open the public hearing.
So.
All right, there second?
My second.
Uh, roll call, Lowberg, maybe.
All right.
Stone, I, public hearing is open for any questions or comments regarding the fiscal year twenty one twenty two budget amendment. Which is, um, majority of it is for the Highway one oh five project. Um, just transferring funds from one place to another to use that. And I think that's, yeah, a good portion of it, there's a little here for insurance. And some court related services, but, uh, and a little bit for zoning.
We're gonna be over, um, welcome this comp and. I cap, so.
Yeah.
So that's why I put those in there.
Check yourself.
Yep.
And, um, I M W C A does it kinda. Yeah, because you pay in installments, and then you pay the first chunk of next year's.
Right.
At the end of. Yeah, so, so if it's more, you know, when it's more, the chunk at the end, or chunk for the beginning ends up being bigger than what I thought it was gonna be, so.
Which, yeah, they.
So I gotta just keep an eye on that and make sure I got enough for the next round.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone in the public that has any questions or comments with the budget amendment? Okay, well, if there's no comments or anything from the public, I will take a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Alright, roll call vote. Um, Lowberg, maybe, Stone, I, public hearing is closed. And we'll reconvene the regular meeting. And we'll move to Resolution twenty twenty one dot eleven dot oh eight dot oh two, which is the budget amendment. For the things that were discussed. But take a motion to approve the resolution. Alright, is there a second? Any other discussion? There are none, uh, both roll call vote, Lowberg, maybe, Stone, I, that resolution will pass.
We'll have the form from department management to official, officially, officially make it. Next week. Cause I gotta put the adoption date in before I can see that it's passed.
Alright. Um, this timing matter on the canvas or can we do that? Alright, twenty twenty one city and school election canvas. Callie up the votes. Was there decent turnout? I saw the results, but I guess I didn't kind of pay attention to what's, what's percentage of. Never really seemed to be due there.
Well, it was, what was it, over sixteen percent. Oh, Manley was the winner. They had the most come out, but Northwood, Northwood and Kinsit were, it was really, no, there was no challenges or anything, so it was just kind of status quo, but, um. A lot of signing. Hope you got your ink in your. There. Okay, so basically, what happened was. So the absentees were pretty, there was only thirty five of them. Be included in. And every one of them got back, so that was, that was okay. Okay, so fertile. So, um, basically we'll start with fertile. The election at the polls. Nick Bailey got seventy five. Sophie Rivera got twenty one. There was one write-in and four undervotes. So the total, after you add in the absentees, Nick Bailey got seventy six, Sophie got twenty two. There was one write-in, four undervotes. Everybody good? So our winner was Nick Bailey was seventy six. Burl at large, um, they had two people on the ballot and one had to be a write-in, so, um, Penny Miller got seventy five, Holly got eighty five, and there were fifty six write-ins. So what ended up happening was, um, Penny Miller got seventy seven total, Holly got eighty seven total. And then there should be a write-in name there for Sophie Rivera, and I think it's nine. Yep, so that, so those are the three. Those are Penny, Holly, and Sophie. You're after next. Had the big race for mayor. It was Greg Erbach, thirty nine, John Bork, fifty three, zero write-ins, one undervote. After write-ins, it was Greg forty, or not write-ins, absentees. Greg Erbach, forty, John Bork, fifty three, and one undervote, and our winner was John Bork. On council, we were one short again, so we had to do write-ins. Uh, it was Michael Schaub, seventy seven, Tom Kruger, seventy one, Jane DeLee, seventy nine. Randy Holshizer, sixty four, and then there were forty eight write-ins. And the end, it ended up being seventy seven for Michael Schaub, seventy two for Tom Kruger, seventy nine for Jane DeLee. Sixty four for Randy Holshizer, and then you should have another name on there.
Randy Hyde.
Yeah, so they have two Randys now. And on town, another contested race, we had Linda McMullen had nineteen for mayor. Richard Charles Schulbrook had twenty six, write-ins were nine, and undervote was four. So what it ended up with was Linda McMullen had nineteen. Richard had twenty seven, there were nine write-ins, and there were four undervotes. For for council, it's a little easier. There were five of them, so it was Samuel was forty nine, Janet was forty six, Linda fifty seven, Shannon thirty three, Crystal Bauer thirty two. Write-ins were twenty four. It ended up being Samuel fifty, Janet forty seven, Linda Fulton fifty eight. Shannon Warren thirty four, Crystal Bauer thirty three, so they're all winners. And back to the mayor one, there were enough for Linda Fulton, I think there were three. So, um, she got to be on the list too, but didn't win. There's just, there weren't that many votes, so to get to the five percent, it didn't take much. Roll in to the next city, Joyce. They didn't have a mayor, they just had two council spots. They only got one person to get on the ballot, so Tamara Dykstra got forty. And there were twenty two write-ins. Luckily, Michael Schmidt must have wanted it. And he ended up having enough write-ins to get into. So, um, in the end, it was Tamara had forty two, and then, um, the write-ins for Michael Schmidt. Some people taped them together. Okay, so Kinsit, that was an easy peasy one. Um, Cory Polu was, um, voted for mayor. There were no write-ins, there were no undervotes, so it was just twenty four. Uh, and he won. So, and there was one absentee, so it was twenty five total. City of Kinsit. At large council, same thing, or there were, there were six undervotes, but Chuck Pilkington got twenty. Ronald Parker got twenty two. On with adding absentees, it was Chuck twenty, Ronald Parker twenty three, and they're both in again. All fun was. Yeah, two hundred fifty one total votes. So Tim O'Keefe one hundred and eighty eight polls, Anna Hawkins had thirty seven, and there were sixteen write-ins. With absentees, Tim O'Keefe had one ninety four for to be the winner, and Anna had sixteen. Or council. Thank you. For council, out of the nine, they got the three picked out. Rick Aguilera had one fifty eight at the polls, Joshua Lund had one had eighteen, Amy Durgen had ninety, Brittany Pollan had twenty one. Melanie twelve fifty two, David sixty five, Troy Tabbert was the top one with one sixty six. Ernest McGannich was sixteen, Pete Andera one thirty, and there were three write-ins and twenty five unders. So after the absentees, it was one sixty three for Rick Aguilera. And he was one of the top ones. Joshua Lund had eighteen, Amy Durgen had ninety five, Brittany Pollan had twenty two. Melanie Tilly had fifty three, Dave Thon had sixty seven, Troy Tabbert had one seventy four. Ernest McGannich had sixteen, and Pete Andera had thirty, one thirty five. So your top three are Rick Aguilera, Pete Andera, and Troy Tabbert. Northwood, that was a pretty uneventful one too. The mayor was back in. He had a hundred and ten at the polls. And adding write-ins, he had one twenty four. There were six write-ins and six undervotes. We had new one, we have Steve Peterson had a hundred and eleven, Teresa George Zenz had a hundred and five. After the absentees, Steve had one twenty five, and Teresa has one nineteen, and there were seven write-ins. Then we need to circle back to schools. After absentees, there were for Central Springs School Director District One North A, Jean Schilling has two hundred and ninety three, there were seven write-ins. Central Springs School Director to fill a vacancy, Joseph Rowe got two eighty two, there were four write-ins. Central Springs School Director District South A, Ashley Kohler got one thirty one. Jason Blickendorfer got one sixty three, there were three write-ins. Northwood Kinsit, and with those, there's no winners yet because I have to combine the other counties that are in there, so there will be a second canvas next Monday.
Just for.
So we can have more fun. Yep, but Northwood, we're done, we're gonna be done with them today. Bradley Christensen got one sixty four, and Susan Clement got one fifty six, and they're our winners. There were eight write-ins and forty eight undervotes. Forest City, this will be the information that I'm sending to other counties for, because they're the control county. So for Forest City Director District One, Eric Kingland got seventy four, Andrew Fetter's got thirty seven, Beth Klaus got seventy one. Forty six undervotes. Forest City Director District Two, it was Troy Thompson with ninety seven. Write-ins for one and undervote sixteen. Forest City School Director District Three, uh, David Reese had eighty, Rick F Wiley got twenty two. And there were twelve undervotes. Lake Mills School Director at Large. There were six for Carol Anne Burglin, eighty, or ninety seven for Casey Singlestead. And thirty one for Don, Donald Knutson. No undervotes or overvotes, write-ins. Lake Mills School Director District One, Stephanie Stormy got a hundred and twenty two, write-ins two, undervotes ten. Lake Mills Director to fill a day, to fill a vacancy District Three. Amanda Jensen, thirty seven, Vernon Martenson, thirty five, Carrie O'Shaim, sixty, and then two undervotes. And go over to St. Ansgar, Tony Brown got eighty, and there were nineteen undervotes. This was four. There was no candidate. So there were ten write-ins and, um, there, they were just a scattering. So I'll just send them the list and they'll have to compile it with the rest of what they have. To see if it ends up being more than a scattering.
Trying to catch that five percent with what her name gets on, right?
Yeah. St. Ansgar Direct School Director District Five, Mary Luanne Hammond got eighty two, or Hannah, um, got eighty two, and there were seventeen undervotes. St. Ansgar School Director District Six, Lindsay Bock got eighty one, and there were eighteen undervotes. Now we had North Iowa Area Community College Director District One because of Lake Mills and Forest City. David Stephens got two hundred and twenty, there was one write-in and twenty seven undervotes. We have North Iowa Area Community College Director District Five because we have St. Ansgar in there. So that was Doug Crabby, and that is seventy five and twenty four undervotes. And then circled back to the, and I think I left it at the end. City of Joyce had a public measure on, on their library terms, and there were forty five yes and one no. Then Forest City School Public Measure was a whole long measure. Eighty seven yes, twenty one no, and six undervotes. If you wanna wait until after to sign, that's probably okay.
After.
Leave that all right here so we can hand warmed up.
Alright, okay, so now the canvas is done. We will.
Oh, and let's make a motion to.
Motion to approve, Mark's got a motion to approve the city school election canvas, their second. Any other discussion on it? There are none, all in favor, I, I, both, alright, canvas will pass. Okay, Jeff Warball, sorry to keep you waiting and hope you're still there.
Yep, still here, can you hear me alright?
We hear you just fine, go ahead.
Perfect, alright, thank you. So pursuant to, uh, guidance from the county supervisors on October fourth and October eleventh of this year, the zoning commission met on November The zoning commission met on November third to review the supervisor proposed changes to the June twenty-eight draft wind ordinance. We received changes from each of the supervisors during October. And we consolidated those changes for review and discussion by the zoning commission. I just forwarded a document to each of you that contains those proposed changes. That were submitted by the supervisors, along with the comments from the zoning commission. And draft of what new language would look like in the ordinance if a change were approved by the supervisors. Now, I would note that several of the individual changes that were proposed by any one supervisor. Sometimes were in conflict with a change that was submitted by another supervisor. These conflicting changes were grouped together for review and discussion by the zoning commission. And the report retains that grouping, includes the conclusive comments on each of the grouping. By the commission for the benefit of the supervisors' discussion and vote. One major theme of the proposed changes by the supervisors. Was to change or eliminate property line protections as defined in the original draft ordinance. And as explained in the rationale document that was submitted by the zoning commission. When we gave the draft ordinance in June. The zoning commission was unanimous in strong opposition to the elimination of those private property rights. But we did recognize those were supervisor desired changes, so we commented on the changes that you were proposing. A related aspect was discussed during our November third review. As it implies to impacts associated with growth of new residents in rural areas of the county. Since the draft of the ordinance and discussion of the wind turbine impacts has grown over the past couple of months. It's come to light that there are many building sites in the county, as identified in county tax records as building sites. That provide prime opportunity for new rural residents into the county. Some of these sites are separate parcels of a few acres, and others are set up as building sites. For tax purposes, but they're part of larger land parcels. Where the, the, the building site is kind of an island, if you will, amongst some, some ag land. The commission members were approached by several people indicating a desire to be able to develop those building sites in the future. For family and friends. And during discussion of the supervisor proposed changes last Wednesday. A concept for protection of those building sites was developed. The commission was split three, four, and two against on that concept, but since a majority was supportive. That concept is included in the report as well. So debate and vote on that by the supervisors would help add clarity to the question of priorities between. Land for turbines or goals to entice new citizens to the county. One other aspect that was discussed by the commission and included as an additional recommendation. Was to add a carve-out related to agency reviews specifically for worthwhile wind. Some of the agencies review things that have long, long periods of time between change. You know, archaeological sites or DOT roads and things of that nature. The draft ordinance expects timely reviews of agencies for these projects. But the, the commission decided that for some of those agencies. You know, even if it may have been a year or two ago that those reviews were conducted for worthwhile wind. The reality is the underlying things that the agency reviews probably wouldn't have changed anyway. So we included a recommendation to waive a review of some of those agencies. So each of the supervisor proposed changes with the zoning commission comments are presented in the report. In a form that's intended to allow discussion, debate, and vote on each of those individual changes by the county supervisors. Since it's possible that during the supervisor discussion on those items, that you may come up with a new alternative change. You know, to be proposed and voted, so I'll plan to attend. Each of the meetings in which the supervisors have the debate and votes on those changes. So that I can address any questions you have that, that may come up at the time, or point out additional necessary questions. As a result of that change related to text somewhere else in the draft. Once the supervisors have voted on each of the proposed changes. Then the zoning commission can prepare a clean copy of the draft with those changes that were approved by the supervisors' vote. So that the supervisors can proceed with the process required for adopting the ordinance. So again, I forwarded a copy of this letter of transmittal and the report to each of you. So you should have that in your, in your email box. So I don't know if you have any questions for me at this time, but that's all I have for you right now.
I don't think we have any questions, we'll go ahead and read through the, the stuff that you sent us this morning. And bring that back to the table here within the next week or two. And then we can decide which direction, or if there's any other changes that need to be addressed at that time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, and thank you the, the rest of the zoning board for, for going through this for us, so. Okay, I know we kind of just touched on people's service, was there any, anything going on, anything going on good out there, you know? All right. It's a good sign. Okay, and I think we've covered everything above that, we jumped around a little bit, I think we're through. Now we're down to department head discussion. Department heads, questions, comments. Turns, not even you know that.
Just FYI, Iowa Land Records. Will Dunshee is doing his visits throughout the state. There will be a webinar here in North County, out at Country Inn on December fourteenth. And it starts at three-thirty, and I would like to close my office, so all of us can attend.
He should be closing a little bit earlier, whatever.
But yeah, I think it would be beneficial, because there'll be banks, attorneys, and whoever else. Throughout the area that will be attending.
Part of what affects you, so, in your job position, so.
Yep, what you gotta do to keep up on that stuff, so.
Kind of an announcement up ahead of time, people know your clothes.
Sounds good. Other department heads. Okay, if nothing, Supervisor Weekly, you know.
Nothing.
It's like two weeks ago. We said planning is on there on Monday night. We're gonna take it from white industrial to heavy industrial. Apparently, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance to do that, so we recommend we move it on to the council. Which I think their recommendation will come back. Timeframe, that's gonna be, I'm not sure, it should be a simple process, just get the legal work done, public meeting. You know, check maybe F3, if there's no objections, we should go away with the readings.
Suppose just the same as changing one to another, just those are gonna be adding another classification to that ordinance.
Apparently, it's not in there anywhere, so. I've never seen, do you know if that's available online? I've never seen one, you know, I come to the meeting. Jane was the only one that had the books.
I don't know if they have that on their website or not, I'd have to go back and look.
Could've jumped on and looked, but I haven't.
Yeah, I used to have a book, but I don't anymore.
Most of the boards we get thrown on usually, usually give us a policy book, or you know, something like that. I've only, it's one of the second meeting I've attended, the other one was cut and dry.
Yeah, I think they'd have it on the website.
You would think so, so I could. Well, that's Mary, yeah, Dave, Dave was on, so maybe I could look through there again. Did clean it out, I don't remember seeing.
That was it?
That was it.
I had Board of Adjustment meeting in Manly for a local resident, Tom. Garage, he was going to build. Location too near the property line, some other issues, but I think we got it all ironed out. He's gonna keep his garage, just have to change a few minor things to keep there, which. He's taken a part of his lot, it's been empty for years and years and years, and that little tax base too, so, just gotta. Do, jump through a few hoops, but should be good to go, that's all I had last week. Okay, um, starting for next week's agenda. On the one is, we will be meeting WB on Friday. Okay, if nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, I, I, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.